And the good news.
I'm going to call this meeting to order, please. And if you can just let the record show that all seven commissioners are present. The purpose of this special meeting is for the following. There's A, B, and C. I'll go by. A is consideration and possible vote to award the bid for the North Shores meter replacement program. And then there's B, which is consideration and possible vote to award the bid for the citywide paving project. And then C, which is consideration and possible vote on modifying the 2020 fiscal year budget to authorize the expenditure of up to $278,660 relating to Phase One and Phase Two of the wayfinding program developed by Merge Design. And we'll start out with A. Kevin.
Great. Thanks, Mayor. And thank you, Commissioners, for letting me come in on a Monday afternoon and try to get these to you so you can hopefully approve, so we can get these awards out to the contractors and get them started work before it gets too cold. First bid result we'll bring to you, I think, and I'm pretty confident you just got a copy of the entire recommendation of award from the design consultants. But here you can see, we really only got one responsive bidder on the North Shores meter replacement. We're investigating kind of why we only had that little interest. But what we have found out that because of the conditions at North Shores, and talking to a couple of the contractors, they were really afraid of getting in there because of the wet conditions. So they priced it a little higher because of the potential for when they dig up a meter pit, having to put some sort of retaining wall in or something to pump the water out to replace it. So after talking with them, we felt a little bit better about kind of the reasons why we only got the one responsive bidder. So our government estimate originally was in the 400-ish thousand. The bid came in at 630, so when we worked with the contractor to bring down kind of the scope a little bit, so instead of doing the, you know, 250-plus meters, we're going to try to do about 180. But we didn't want to bust the budget. So we just reduced the scope a little bit to get that program going. So we're recommending an award of $399,000 to Harry Caswell.
So I'm assuming then for next year, we'll be doing the rest?
Correct.
That's the idea?
Right. And in fact, when you look at the five-year CIP and beyond, and what we did with the rate study is, we have an amount in each year because this is just the tip of the iceberg on the meters that are 25 years old throughout the city, and they ain't getting any younger.
Right, right.
So we've got to get a programmatic kind of replacement going. This was our first cut at it.
Okay.
I apologize. I'm sorry, were you done, Pat?
Yeah.
I apologize. I'm sure, I think you just said this, but just in my own mind, was this part of the cost that went into the overall, you know, wastewater, water fees and everything? That's where the funding's coming from, correct?
We had $450,000 in for this year. It went into the rate, rate study analysis.
Yes, that's what I thought. I thought. I'm sorry to ask you that again, but we've seen a lot of these, so thanks.
Well, no, you need to go and just raise the rate, now me come back and say, ah, what do you know, half a million?
Right. Just thought I'd confirm that. Thank you. And how many are being done out of ones that were going to be done?
About 185.
Out of?
We had originally wanted to do about 257.
Okay. And the rest of them will be done next year?
Correct.
And how many are in North Shores?
About 260-ish, I think.
Oh, okay. So you should be able to finish next year.
Right.
We put in the budget for the remaining in North Shores and start some other places as well.
Pick another route and start on that route.
Okay, great. Any other questions, comments?
Kevin, do you anticipate that completing this project is going to have any cost savings on this city? For instance, I know the new meters should take less administrative time from staff to go around and collect the data.
Correct. The newer, the automated readers are much easier to collect the data. Probably more of an impact is going to be, because these are 25 meters or 25 years old, they've been living in water-filled pits for 20-some years, they're probably running slow. So a new meter is going to run a little faster, and we're going to get a more accurate bill to those homeowners for the water they're really using and not, you know, a decreased amount or a lower billed amount for what they're actually using. I think that'll be more of an impact of revenue coming in.
And I think as we were going through this whole thing with the wastewater and water, we realized that many of the meters that we have all around town are very old, and some of them get stuck, or some of them run a little faster, run a little bit slower. And I think as we replace these around the city, it's just going to be much more efficient across the board. Because I think with some of these meters, we found that water was getting wasted because they're 25 years or older, stuff like that. So I think it'd be good positive in the long run.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward to award the bid to Harry Caswell in the amount of $399,944.49.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bid from Harry Caswell for the North Shores Water Meter Replacement Project of $399,244.49. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Let me do that pretty quick. Well, what are you getting? Contingency or the base bid?
Base bid only.
Thank you, Kevin.
On our street paving for this year, we had two responsive bidders. Adel Construction, who we've worked with before, most recently on the Henlopen Avenue resurfacing, and then Georgian Lynch. Adel was the lower bid at $428,000. And as we just talked about, we had different alternative bid alternates in the bid package, but based upon the bid amounts, we're really only going to be able to award the base bid amount, which, if you remember, was the two blocks on Philadelphia Street, I think three blocks on Third Street, and then the block on Stokely in front of Stokely Park, as part of the tot line. So those are the three sections that will get resurfaced under this bid. So we would ask you to authorize the award of the contract to Adel at the $428,000.
Remind me real quick, is the Third Street, is that on the North Rehoboth or on the North Rehoboth side? Okay.
I think it goes from Lake to Columbia.
So the ad alternates were other streets or what?
Right.
Okay.
And so, I mean, just...
So this is great. I mean, I'm glad we're moving forward this, but we do still have a couple of things in the city that are problems, which I'm sure this doesn't necessarily address. We have something else in the budget to address some issues that we have on Kent Street and also on Grove. I think Grove is going to be taken care of soon.
So for drainage issues specifically?
Yeah, right.
So Grove, they're going to start Wednesday of this week, so we should be able to tie that, the end of the bike trail where it's been holding water for so long. We'll drain that over to the nearby inlet. So we'll put a new inlet in and drain that. That work's going to happen Wednesday. The area around Kent and that, the park out there, is being studied by Beacon Engineering, so they'll come back with a feasibility recommendation saying, you can do something, and here's what you could do prior to this year's budget cycle. So by the end of the calendar year, we'll have an idea from them whether something's feasible out there or not.
Well, you're saying in front of the park. Actually, there's an issue in Kent and Third where, I mean, I just saw it the other day. I mean, it's just...
Kent and Fourth.
Kent and Fourth. I'm sorry, Kent and Fourth.
Yeah, you know, that whole area on Kent.
Is it the Triangle Park or Deer Park?
Deer Park.
Right.
But she's right, the worst is Kent and Fourth.
Kent and Fourth is a river.
And then the houses around there, yeah. So feasibility, I thought they were actually coming back with the cost to remedy the situation where there's no storm drains there.
The first step was feasibility study to see if there is a solution. They could come back and go, well, you can't do anything. Elevation doesn't work, you know, or whatever. Or then they'll come back and say, here's what it costs to do the design to do what it is we decide we want to implement.
And I would imagine that would be in the next phase, this next year, because the budget, we already have over, I think, the next five years or four years, 450 for paving on an annual basis?
Yeah.
Okay, wait, I thought we were going to have a cost estimate. I mean, I've asked many times.
Correct. You'll get a, I call it a design estimate.
Okay.
So it won't be, it'll be ballpark, because he'll come back and say, yes, you can do it, and you would tie this into that, that pipe is large enough to hold it. So let's say we want to take it to Columbia, the drain on Columbia.
Okay, got it.
So he goes, yes, you can, you can take it to Columbia. It's feasible, and it'll cost, you know, less than a million dollars.
Okay.
So then we would say, okay, we want to move forward to that, and it'll cost us, you know, $15,000 to do the detailed design, put it out to bid. So next year, assuming we want to move forward to that, I think that's where we would say budget enough to do a detailed design for the stormwater relief in that section of town.
Just the design, so it still wouldn't be fixed in this budget?
Correct. In the following year, you get the money to budget it.
Oh, I thought this year's budget, well, anyway.
Yeah, feasibility study this year was all I think we got in.
That wasn't my understanding at all.
Well, here's the thing. I mean, let's just talk about it for a minute. It's a real problem. I mean, it's a problem now, and waiting a year to have it fixed, I think, is a problem.
Yeah, this is honestly, my understanding, I don't know engineering, but it's a big part. To me, it's an incredibly big problem. It's been going on for decades. There's no stormwater drainage there. I thought we were actually doing the study to figure out how much it's going to cost to fix it and put it into this year's budget.
So a way to prioritize it is, I guess, is what we're asking for. Can we prioritize this project? And I guess...
And get a price quote for this year, this year's budget, to fix it, not just to study more.
So an option would be, we'll get the feasibility study finished, let's say December, and we're in the budget process, we'll know, have a ballpark idea of what it's going to cost, and then say, okay, we'll design it. If you want to put enough money into the budget to do it, we design it, you know, April 1st to August 15th, advertise it and construct it next fall. So you can compress it. You can gain a year by doing the design over the summer and construction in the fall. You've just got to put that money in the budget.
I guess probably you didn't hear what I was saying, which is, we can't wait a year. I don't believe we can wait a year.
I'm with Pat.
We can't just go out and start digging.
No, I understand that.
We couldn't go solve that problem today.
No, I know you can't solve it today, but it seems like we could solve it before a year. That's all I'm saying.
Me, too.
I mean, I want to see us prioritize it. And I mean, if the rest of the commissioners agree that it's a priority...
I agree. I've been saying it for two years. I'm just shocked.
And some of the people probably don't realize what the problem is over there, but it's significant. So that's...
Can the design period of time be condensed down?
That's why, so you could do a compressed design and do it from one April, the new budget year, to, you know, you say it's August.
So let me...
Because you need to advertise it, then select an award, and you want to start construction early fall, so you could finish it by next spring.
So let me ask the city manager. We're talking about putting this in the budget for next year. Is there money?
Let me clarify this implementation of the solution. Go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, is there money to start, or can we do something about looking at some funding now to start the process sooner?
So, and I was going to ask the Director of Public Works. So if we start right now to do the study and the design, right now, if we start...
Study's being done right now.
Study's being done. So if the design is done right after the study, when will the study be complete?
December-ish.
Okay. We start the design January 1. Forget about the fiscal year. How long will it take to complete the design?
Four to six months.
So that's in the summer, and then we would have to wait until the fall. We'd have to wait until September to begin the project.
Correct.
But you're saying that the procurement cycles, what takes the time?
The design and then 60 to 90 days on the procurement.
Right, okay. But it's not just the design that takes the four months. It's from design until contract award is the four months. And then the construction would take place?
No, I would say the design to award is four to six months.
Right.
He's not going to, they're not going to design it in less than 90 days. I mean, unless you go a lot of money at them and tell them to go hire some new people and all that kind of stuff, to compress the design. It just takes 90 days, for sure. And then you need 30 to advertise, you know, then you select, and come to two board meetings, it's another 30 days. So optimistically, five months.
Yeah.
Optimistically, six.
And the design cost would be approximately, any idea? No, what we can do is after the study is done, and then we get a firm number on the design cost, we can come back to you before, during the budget discussion, actually, starting in January, to give you that number and see if it would make a difference to, it's not going to, the timing won't be able to be expedited to not start the project until the fall of 2020. But if the design is proposed to begin in January, that wouldn't save us any time unless as part of the budget cycle. So it wouldn't matter if we say, okay, push the button, start in January, or start in April 1, we'd still need that four to six months to start in the fall, because we have that summertime constraint.
Okay. Well, it's just that I didn't realize it was going to take that kind of time. So, but you know, it is what it is, I guess. There's nothing we can do about it.
Well, and I would imagine that Philadelphia Avenue and Third Street and Stokely, the projects that you're doing are pretty important, and they've already been designed and...
Now, I will say, all those were selected from a pavement perspective, not from a stormwater perspective.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
I mean, this is coming out of that 450 a year that you guys have dedicated toward pavement repair, whereas the other is a stormwater repair. It will include some paving, because you're going to want to pave it after you dig it all out.
Right, got you.
Was that, the feasibility study was put in the budget when you all did the budget?
Yeah.
For April, right. Okay, so presumably, it was put there with other things on a priority basis, right? I mean, other things were in there, too, right? Okay.
So just explain, from an engineering standpoint, again, maybe I'm just, I really believe, we've talked about this for two years. I thought we were getting a price quote that would go into the budget to fix this. So I guess I didn't ask the right question. So let me ask it this way. Grove, and I'm not implying we need to change Grove, I'm happy it's being done, it's great it needs to be, but why is it we were able to do, fix the Grove Street problem? I mean, from identification to fix, it's been like a month. I mean, so why is it we're able to put in, identify that, put in a new stormwater system and pave it and do all this in a month, and yet it's two years now into the issue on Kent, well, decades, but two years since I've been sitting here trying to please do something?
But I would just say, it didn't sit there for decades because it was an easy fix, right? Somebody would have fixed it if it was easy. Grove Park is easy. There's a storm drain within 10 yards, so where we're going to tie into...
Oh, okay, I thought you were putting in a new storm drain there, too.
We're going to put an inlet in by the bike track.
Got it. And by the way, I support the Grove Park. It's a mess.
So the order of magnitude is not even in the same ball.
Got it. Okay, I understand. I understand, that's helpful.
Yeah, and Grove has been there for a year. I mean, it's been an issue since we were down on...
At least since we did the bike trail.
No, it needs to be addressed. I just was wondering about this, the complexity.
And some of those expenses are built into the budget. So if it's a $10,000, you know, as a departmental budget, if there's money that is funding that's left over, if you will, or funding that's not used from one project because of a variety of reasons, then that funding in that specific departmental account could be used for a small project like this.
Well, that opens up a whole nother subject that I'm not going to...
Because Grove was $9,000.
Yeah.
It's a lot of dollars. It wasn't...
Right. How much was the feasibility study for Kent Street, just out of curiosity? Is it roughly, is it $100,000 or is it? Okay.
I mean, it's in the thousands.
I know, you put it in the budget for this year, so I think accelerating the design into implementation would be a good approach. I have a que...
Y'all can definitely make that decision.
Yeah.
I'll give you the number, and you can decide.
Okay, sounds good.
I have a question about, can you just, as far as ad alternate one and ad alternate two, which streets were they, which ones are we having to leave out?
So ad alternate, one had a crack ceiling and, I guess, crack ceiling on, it's in Country Club on Laurel. So a bunch of the, they aren't structural cracks, but we thought if we could do some crack ceiling, we could prevent, you know, structural failure from happening. So that came out. We had some selective patching on Scarborough and Byard, but we don't want to mill an overlay there because we know we have issues under the street. So we're going to try to video those this winter, figure out what the fix is before we pave those. But we thought there were some spots that we could patch. Oh, I know, I've got the map, so yeah.
So they weren't whole street pavings, they were the, they were ceilings and patches and things like that?
There was also a couple of full streets, and I have that here on my... So the red is what was base bid, so all that is, we're recommending the award. Ad alternate one or two had this, the blue section, which is along King Charles, just kind of the intersection where, between Brooklyn and Laurel. The purple was the patching along Scarborough, and then some down around, I guess it's... And then the green had the crack ceiling, yeah, the crack ceiling.
Okay.
That helps. Why do you think, keep the map up for a second, this is the second year in a row when the majority of the paving projects are in South Rehoboth? Why is that? Is it just older paving there? Or, I just don't understand how it's so, you know, how so much of it's been in South Rehoboth and not so much in North Rehoboth for two years?
Here's the map with the construction history. So this includes, I'm sorry, it doesn't. I thought we had like the Henlopen Avenue one, because that was just done last year.
Yes, that was a big one.
So if you remember, when we did it for the original presentation, it showed all the things that had been done for other projects as well. So, and this one, I will tell you, it's, if you look at, take the purple and the green out, and you'll see, I think that it's actually probably weighted a little far, a little extra on South Rehoboth, because Henlopen Avenue was such a big job, you know, on the north side. So I will tell you, I definitely look at that to make sure we're not just, we're not just going to pay Country Club estates and everyone else's expenses. So that's one of the things we try to factor in, is the distribution. Yeah.
Okay.
I thought this had Grove State and Henlopen on it, but it doesn't. So that was, trying to show you what we paved in the last year and a half, two years total.
Anything else?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to award the bid for the citywide street paving project, the base bid to Adel Construction in the amount of $428,992.30.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the citywide paving project number 2020-01 to Adel Construction Company for the base bid sum of $428,992.30. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, if we can project, thank you.
Yeah, and the final discussion is the consideration and possible vote on modifying the 2020 fiscal year budget to authorize the expenditure of up to $278,660 relating to Phase One and Two of the wayfinding signage program developed by Merge Design.
So as you've seen on, at the last meeting and other meetings prior to this, the Merge Group has come up with Group One and Group Two, design phases, Group Three and Group Four. The first two groups, Group One and Group Two, identify mainly pedestrian signage, bike and trail signage, parking directional signage. And then the Group Three and Four is the gateway signage into the city and directional signage, any kiosk refurbishment that's needed, and also including a new parking brochure. So as we put the entire cost for the two phases, if you will, into this, embedded in the agenda, just so you could see the amount of $279,000, and decide on which group, if you'd like to continue with this.
Do we have a copy of that, just to relook at?
I was looking for it, and I couldn't find it. I thought the ranges were between 170 and 205.
Me, too.
And I couldn't find the chart.
I was just looking for it. I can't find mine.
I was, too. Remember being at that, being that high?
I don't know that any of the supporting documents were provided in this agenda, but from the last regular meeting agenda, that these documents were included. So I actually have the order of magnitude here.
And actually, I have this from the October 11th meeting, and Phase One total was $129,000, and Phase Two was $149,660, which do add up to $278,660.
Yeah.
Or 660.
And if, you'll recall, too, we have the $20,000 from Community Transportation Fund as well. So total, it's maybe about $259,000 that we'd probably be looking for.
So this would require a budget amendment that is typically made by the Finance Director. I won't say on a regular basis, but we have made them before. Of course, the budget, as you see, it is based on a set of assumptions for expenditures and revenue, and at times, there's deviations from that. And whether it be an emergency or whether it be a new project like this that you would like to see funded because of the timing issue, and as John Bosio pointed out to you last time, he would need to start this project by the end of December to have it in place by May for the next season. So...
Well, my question is actually, to me, the amount's 244 that we're approving today, and I'll tell you how I get there. You had the 278 minus the 20, which is 259, and then 259 minus the 15K, because he stood up there and said, I'm not going to charge him, I'll do the printing, but we don't need to build that into the budget. That's what he said. So that's what I wrote down.
Oh.
So that's another 15K.
I thought he just said he should do it because...
He said, I'm just going to do it because we need to do it, but not because...
Yeah, but he didn't say he was going to do it for free.
No, absolutely not.
I don't think that should be in the budget, period, here.
Well, I mean, remember, what we're putting in here is the total amount. Remember also, when he was talking about the $15,000, he also talked about these being Phase One and Phase Two in pieces. And so his whole thought was, if you're going to do it all at once, I'm going to be less, because these are in pieces. So if you look at the additional items, for example, there are a couple of things that I think as they're combined, they're going to be less. So I think it's really, the 278, 660 is what the city manager is saying is here. The top would be 278, 660.
So not to exceed, yeah.
Not to exceed. And, you know, with the idea that we're hoping it's going to be 250 or less as much as possible.
So the economy of scale here is the reason where, you know, trying to go for the whole thing, which I think we need the whole thing. I have said this before, I was the person who really wanted to push this forward and get this done before the season.
Because if you look at the additional costs he has on each phase, they're almost exactly the same. And I think with the economies of scale, doing both phases at once cuts those down. And then also the kiosk stuff, which I think is the 15,000 you were talking about.
It was actually the map hall and the printing, the brochure. I mean, we have printing capabilities, I'm not sure why we'd spend $15,000 on printing.
Right, well, we're not awarding the contract right now. What we're doing is approving the amount, right?
Yeah, but why would we approve an amount that includes things that...
And the printing is not in, it's not in the 278.
It was.
I know it was.
But that's the same number. So it's still 278, but it's...
278 with both phases. And...
What's the date on that one?
It was...
October 11.
And both phases is four groups. And I know it's 15K of a big amount, but I'm more inclined to say not to exceed 245 and have it negotiated and don't do things like, like spending $15,000 on printing.
The only thing that I think we're, I'm concerned about if we go lower on this, and I don't know what the situation is, since we're basically modifying, the, the vote today is to modify the budget to include this amount. And if in fact, for some reason, it's going to cost us a little bit more or something like that, I don't want to be in a situation where there's no money to pull from. And that's question, is, could that be a problem?
Certainly. I mean, if there's, if the money's not budgeted for it, then it could be, it could be a problem. I mean, there's advertising and printing budgets in each department that it could be taken from, but that would mean that something else would, would not, you know, be funded.
But my first point is that 278 is his bid, a contractor's bid to us.
His estimate.
That's right. And then, but, but we've, we have $20,000 already for the project and grants. So it's already down to 258.
But we've already spent 30.
Yes, but that was in the budget.
Okay.
Plus there was 20,000 in grants.
Okay.
So this 278, the first thing you do is use the grants. So you're down to 258. It just is a lot, it's a lot of money for, I think we need to do it.
Since we're talking about the financial piece of it, can we, can you put up the, the magnitude?
Sure.
That was dated, I guess, the 11th? Because I, I'm not seeing that version on the, in here at all.
Can you put on the overhead?
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Yeah, that's the same one there.
So this is the Phase One.
Yeah, it is.
It was on the bottom before.
So the Phase One would include, Phase One would include the parking, wayfinding signage, as well as the pedestrian and trail. And then within the parking directional is also the new parking brochure, which you could see the 15,000. John did admit that that's just an estimate based on printing costs and things like that. But the parking department itself does, you know, we have funds within the department budget to print a parking brochure because we do that every year. It's extremely helpful to visitors and residents. And whenever we sell parking permits, we distribute the brochure so they know where they can park, where they can't park. So John did admit that, you know, he's willing to work with us, work with our provider to do the brochure. In my opinion, I just think it's, it's crucial that we work with him for the design of the brochure because we want to make sure that the wayfinding signage ties in with that brochure and everything's kind of consistent. So John, again, the 15,000 is just sort of an estimate, but he's willing to work with us and our vendor to, you know, bring those costs, that cost down as much as possible.
And I would assume, again, this is not to exceed with the idea that hopefully it's a lot less. But.
I mean, worst case scenario is with, or the best case scenario is it costs less and that money that's left over is in the general fund.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's, my, my question is, so we're not awarding a bid. We are earmarking funds? Is that basically, so we?
We don't have it in this year's budget.
No, I got it.
So we're amending the budget to include up to.
So then my question is, if we're earmarking it for this, then we really can't use it for anything else. It would only be, what we're, would only be used for this, right? Okay.
But to be honest, that's not how it's, it's worked in the past. Like when there's a little 10K or 15K here, it's within the jurisdiction of the city manager to go use it wherever, without coming back to us, which, I mean, I think we're very financially secure. But, but I, I just think this bid's very high. I think it doesn't account for a couple things, the 20K or the, or, you know, the, the printing costs. I'm not sure why we would, even if it's just not to exceed, why would we, why would we approve a higher amount than the smaller amount that it's supposed to be, which is at least 250? I mean, it's at least down to 250. I'm not clear why we'd just give away another 28, 27K.
We're not, but we're not.
We're not giving anything away.
No, but, but we're not giving anything away. I mean, it's just, it's just trying to identify the maximum amount of funding that we could possibly need for this.
That we're willing to spend.
Project.
Well, that's my point, is I'm not willing to make that.
Well, I know, each month, I try to make sure I have more than what I need in my banking account. And so, you know, I'm hoping not to spend 20,000 and hoping to spend 15.
But we already know it's going to be 20,000 less than this. So why are we?
But, but, but remember.
I don't understand why would then we would approve.
Once, once he gives us a full and final estimate, a bid from somebody, then we're going to have to approve X.
Right.
Because right now, we're just putting in.
So that ties in another question, is, is he, are we awarding the contract, and we do award it, to him or to the fabricators that are going to be making?
No, we're, we're basically.
I know we're not awarding it today.
Yeah. We're amending.
I got that.
This year's budget so that we can pay for it between now and April 1st.
Right.
He is going to put together over the next month, a bid package to go out to get a bid. So if a bid comes in at X in December, the bids will come to us and they'll, and he'll make his recommendation. And he says, you should award it to A, B, or C for X amount. And at that point in time, we tell them, move forward.
So he will be getting competitive bids and he won't be, we won't be paying him. We'll be paying those, those contractors at his recommendation.
And we are on a fast track. I mean, we're talking December. So if we don't do this now on more or less November 1st, we're not going to be at that point in December.
Correct, correct.
That's the whole point of it.
Yeah, that's the whole point.
What were you going to say, Sharon?
I, I just wanted to make clear that we still pay him for his design work, just like what Kevin talked about.
Yeah.
He's, that's still part of his monetary funding for what he has to do. And then he prepares the bid package.
Mm-hmm.
And it goes out to bid and that required timeline. And then hopefully the, the bid will come in below the price that John estimated.
Right, the estimate. So I, actually, I was going to possibly say, maybe we should say, since all this is just money that'll stay in the general fund anyway, that we would earmark 300,000 for it. Because we know we want it. We can decide that if the brochure is an ad alternate, that we're going to do it ourselves, fine. You know, it's, this is an estimate. I just want to be sure we have the money to move forward. I don't want to be in the position that a month from now, we, we're short. And so now we have to have another meeting where we have to, or, you know, vote on essentially to add money to that estimate because we don't have it.
And the other thing that, that he said when he last met with us is that he's really pushing the envelope on these schedules. And so we may find out that, you know, if there's a slip here or slip there, that the, the cost of, of doing the production and installation is, becomes more of a premium price. At, at our fault, not the fault of the contractor. Then having a little bit of a cushion will allow us to be able to be a little bit more flexible. Hey, I'd, I'd like to spend the least amount to get the most, just like everybody else. But we, we've recognized that this is another thing that's gone on for a couple of years that we haven't gotten done. And so if we want to, if we want to squabble over 10, 15, 20,000 and not move forward today, then I think we run the risk of not meeting the schedule of having this completed before the summer season hits.
I want to squabble, Commissioner Schaefer, because.
Fine, let's not do it.
No, I think we should move forward. I'm just saying, why move forward with more?
I, I think we're.
I don't understand why we're moving forward with more than what the estimate is.
We're not, we're not spending the money yet. You know, we're going to have other decision points where we, we vote on what the, the contractor's bids are and select the best bid from that, which hopefully will be considerably less than the 278,660.
This is a necessary step to put that in process.
Right.
But again, this is. This now, and then in December, we will have those details in front of us where we can talk about, well, do we want 15,000 in there?
And the Commissioner Kalusi's point.
Or can we do it in-house?
And the Commissioner Kalusi's point, it's like, we want to do this one time. So, you know, we may have to think about considering erring on a little bit of a higher side, just so that if we hit something that we hadn't expected, we have the flexibility to do it without slowing anything down.
I, I think during this conversation, we've maybe confused it at certain times, a budget process, which this is only a budget process, and a bidding process, which we've, we haven't gotten to that point yet, and the execution of printing how we print and things of that nature. A prime example, we budgeted $450,000 for street paving.
Exactly.
We just awarded a bid for 428, saving $22,000. So that's just an example of, you know, what you budget for isn't what you're, you're going to spend.
But you tried to budget for the known variables.
Right. But I, I do see Commissioner Schlosser's point in, in that, you know, we don't want to just, you know, without thought, propose that we budget money that, that is more than what we need. I, I just think that I weigh that against.
Thank you. That was my point. You said it better than I did. Thank you.
But I, I weigh this against the, the rapid schedule that we'll be on to get this completed.
That's fair.
And, and the anticipation that we might be on a faster track than we think we need to be on today and have that little bit of a cushion, not a huge cushion, but a little bit of a cushion to enable us to be nimble and get it done. And that's all I'm saying. At the end of the day, I hope we do everything that you're suggesting and the city manager has more money in the general fund to do other important projects.
Yeah, I agree.
I have the, I, like you, Commissioner, I, I got the impression that he was kicking in the $5,000 for designing the brochure for free. But I have the greatest confidence.
For free, but just as part of his cost that he was going to just do that.
I have the greatest confidence that the city manager, when going back and dealing with him, will negotiate and.
You know, one of, one of the things that hasn't really been talked about in this, which has been my concern from the beginning, I think this is very much needed. I also, I'm hearing all this stuff about rushing and, and timeframes and all that. And I, and frankly, I'm afraid, I, I would feel more comfortable phasing some of this stuff in because there're too many unknowns. You know, we, we saw the survey, let me just finish. We saw the survey results about the bicycle routes and safety issues. I agree that parking and wayfinding is absolutely critical. Can't, can't deny that at all. But beyond that, there, there are a lot of other steps. You know, there's the, the whole streetscaving of Baltimore and Wilmington. You know, is that going to be talked about next year? And what's the signage needed for that? There's a coordination between our various parking and streets and committees in the chamber. And, and my understanding is that, that John was going to go out with city staff and, and see all that. And I'm, I'm seeing this rush, rush, and I'm thinking, I, I, I'm uncomfortable with the, with the pace. I feel like we're going to miss something.
I apologize if I misspoke. The rush, rush isn't about the planning and the importance and the due diligence that goes into that. It's, it's the production side of it. It's, it's the procurement side of it.
Yes.
So it's not a rush to judgment. It, it's, it's, it's just that there's, it takes certain times to do things.
Right.
And we have to factor that in. And so if, if we're backing, if we're starting with a May, a date in May as the endpoint, then we have to back down from there to see where we start. So it, it's not, it's not a rush, rush. It's just being realistic about what the schedule's going to be.
Well, I don't.
And all of these things, I feel comfortably are going to be factored into it.
Right.
Based on the group of people who are going to be working together throughout the initial phases of this before we get up to having a procurement document that is ready to be bid on.
Yeah. No, I didn't, I didn't mean you were rushing and say, I meant that, that we are, we do have this May timeframe. And that's really what I question, is whether all four, all, both phases, all four pieces really have to be there by May, considering what other things may come in during the budget process, you know.
Well, okay. So look at this. You know, we're talking about, Phase One is Group One and Group Two. Phase Two is Group Three and Group Four. Well, Group Three and Group Four, one, some of that is, or most of it is gateway signage. That is real specific and that's not going to change. So I don't see any reason why we don't want to go forward with the gateway signage. I find that very important. And I think we should, as well as the kiosk and overhead street signage. So I, I don't see any reason why we don't. I, I'm very much in favor of moving forward with this. And again, my question on this was because we're not, we're not approving a project. We're not approving a bid. We're merely taking, putting budget money together to cover us to do this project. I don't want to come back in a month or two and say, oh my God, we need $25,000 more because it turns out the estimate didn't include something. I don't know what. But, so, I was in thinking that we could even go as far as 300,000, but I'd be fine with the 278, 660. If anyone has any comment on that, I, I know, Lisa, you won't be in favor of that.
No, definitely not in favor of now going up further. But Commissioner Schaefer and Dick here have convinced me that, and I believe we need to go forward with this project and we need to do it now and we need to approve something today. I was just squabbling over how much because typically, I guess I've had too many budget years in a bureaucracy where if, if somebody, if you gave somebody a budget of 250, they would spend 250. If you give somebody a budget of 225, then they would figure out how to get that work done in, in 225, around the edges. So.
This is an outside vendor.
And we're not in a use or lose situation here.
That's true.
You know.
And we get to see the contract before it goes out.
Exactly. Exactly. And so to Susan's point.
That's your point.
If, if we see a situation, you know, when the bids come in, you know, I mean, we could put the best procurement package together and, and still get bids that cause us to rethink the time phasing of this. And so we will have other opportunities to revisit this.
Yes.
And say, okay, we're going to fund this, but we're not going to fund that. Or we're going to delay this. But it gives us the flexibility to do it all at one time if it makes sense.
Yes.
And, and, but if we don't do it, then, then we're going to say woulda, shoulda, coulda. And that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Right. And how many times has John been in front of us over the last year? Yeah. Yeah, maybe four or five times. And so it's not like we're, we're rushing this in terms of his perspective on it. He, he has a clear sense. It's, at least it's my sense that he does, that there is, that there are unknowns. And there's going to be points in that January, February, March period where we're going to be giving him information that's going to come from committees through us to him. And he understands it. We've, we've had these conversations with him.
Yeah, this just didn't, this just didn't happen a month ago. We're making this 300,000, whatever, 278 decision. This is, Evan, you've been working with him even more. Dick has said a year, but I think it's more than that, to come up with this plan. As Steve said, this is, this is about, the plan's been worked on for a long time. The parking committee was absolutely adamant a year ago when they came and said, we should make these changes, that we need to have signage to go with these changes simultaneously. So this has been, I think, pretty well thought out over a couple of years and planned and the parking committee and us seeing these briefings and Evan and others working closely with, with this particular vendor and our consultant. So I don't feel, in, in this case, that we are jumping into anything or, or doing something in an unthoughtful way.
Right.
At all. I really don't.
But I, I do.
I'm just cheap.
I don't want, the point, another point that I want to make sure we don't lose sight of is the, the excellent point, Lisa, that you made, which is, when, when we're looking at, at an action like this, to take a budget action, you know, to cover something that hadn't been considered, we need to really vet it. And, and so I thank you for, you know, staying on that hard line to make sure that we vet these things.
Right.
Because it's really important. I mean, we, we don't have an unlimited budget and we have to look at being smart about it. So I, I think we need to continue to have those types of conversations on a case by case basis and make the best decision we can.
Agree.
Well, with that.
Thank you.
Can, the one thing I don't, I don't think we've heard from yet is from the city manager and the director of finance, do you feel as though we have enough surplus to add this into the budget?
Great question.
I'll, I'll defer to Bert if he wants to add anything. But the answer is yes. I mean, we just saw a million dollar increase in parking revenue. Certainly, we're not, we're halfway through the budget year. We are continuing to receive favorable receipts for our transfer tax and for our property tax. So I, I think the, the safe answer is yes. Always want to be conservative as best as possible. But like I said in the beginning, this is, you know, a budget amendment that Bert has advised me, we've done this in the past, maybe not for signage, but for other projects within the city and the scope of the budget.
Well, as, as the person that needs to execute all of this, I just want to make sure that you feel comfortable with, you know, where we have surplus. you know, where we have surpluses, or where we may be under budget in other areas, so.
Of course, I hope that it comes in lower than what's, what's estimated, too.
Yes.
And we have $20,000 in CTF funds, CT funds, too.
Yeah, we haven't shaken the.
So, so is it, is it fair to say, if we stick with the 278,660, that leaves a $20,000 buffer?
At least.
If you will, at least, assuming that some of the additional items and fees, you know, which are duplicated, we may only be paying that one time.
I, I think we just have to look at it as, as an amendment to the budget, not to exceed 278. And just a couple things, as far as the signage goes, moving too quickly. I don't think this is the end of what we're going to need, because there are certain things, whether it's Wilmington or Baltimore, that we may need in addition. There may be certain bicycle signs, as we look at the trails around the city, that we may need in addition. So I, I don't, I don't think we're moving too fast, and we got to get all these things. I think this is something that we've been working on over a year, and I think this is very important, because I think all of us up here have heard about signage, or the lack thereof in town, or too many signs. And I think this is the wave of the future. And, you know, one of the reasons this, this even came up, is because Merge is working with the state on Route One, and they're just having bureaucracy problems, whereas this looks like something that we can get out in front of the state and set the pace, if you will, so. But by no means is this the end. And I'm not saying, hey, we got another 278 down the road. I'm hoping it's not much of anything, it's just an easy add-on, but there will be more signage issues that come up. And with that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we, is there more discussion?
I saw the hand out there, it wasn't you?
We'll take his question in a moment.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to amend the 2020 fiscal year budget to authorize the expenditure of up to 278,660 relating to Phase One and Phase Two of the wayfinding signage program.
Second?
Do you have a question?
Good afternoon, Walter Burningham, 123 Hennepin Avenue. I'll try to keep it very short. I have reason to believe that Merge has been declined on several recent things, and I am led to understand that we are probably his only customer right now in this area. I also don't think I've seen this displayed before, has this been previously made available, disseminated to the public?
At the October 11th meeting.
Okay, thank you. I will tell you, I appreciate some of the comments made, one, that Steve said, what can we afford? I'll tell you about Motorola, the most important thing is, is get the job. And then, if you can't perform one time, we had quality assurance problems, et cetera, but get the job, so. And at the last meeting, I think Lisa said, made some comments about Wilmington, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Mayor, because the gentleman said, no, Wilmington and Baltimore was not included in it, and I don't know what the contract says. And what the contract says is what he's going to be paid for, and then is the contract going to be extra? So if we know we've got extras right to begin with, we got problems. And at the same time, I expect to see brought forward at the budget hearings, Wilmington and Baltimore Avenue, streetscape items of that nature. I think we need to be talking about conservatism. We've got a big problem in Rehoboth for signage, you can't get into the town, the town's so busy, and we're worried about getting more people in, and moving them around, maybe, but we don't need this all right now. All due respect, Mr. City Manager, you answered the question for me, I said, how much was the fountain? And I said, how nice it looked, and it was $10,000, and then I heard it was $30,000. We spend money like we breathe oxygen, we need to back off. Lisa, you want, you want drainage, we need a new line going out into Silver Lake to drain that side of town, and we don't need this right away, we need to be breaking it apart into manageable parts, and we've never really seen the signs or exactly where they're going to go. I don't think you really know, and I understand what the motion says, modifying the budget, but if it's in the budget, in many cases, in the city by charter, city manager can modify the budget, but this is not necessary at this time. And you can still do all the work, and still bring it up, but you're not going to have this in place by summer. You're talking about fall, you're not going to have people, but they just want to get the job. This man, he's concerned about himself, and now we asserten, apparently, that somebody else is going to do the job. And then is it going to be a recommendation from him who the job is given to? Or are other people going to have input, because we don't do too good a job on bid procedures, thank you.
Thank you, we have a.
Mayor, I'm sorry, can I ask one more question, if you don't mind? I just, I just want to clarify something, I thought this covered signage on all the commercial districts, Baltimore, Wilmington, and Rehoboth.
That's, it basically hits all the signs that he has on his maps, that he put in with the.
Yeah, just remind me, it's, it's.
There's Wilmington, there's some things on Wilmington, there's some things on.
But it's, it's not every single thing, because I don't think he hit everything.
To, to clarify, when he said it wasn't including Wilmington and Baltimore, I was specifically asking about the pay here signs above the kiosks.
Yeah.
He was answering that question specifically.
Okay.
But they're, they're basically around various places.
On Baltimore, Wilmington, and Rehoboth, and I just, I just don't know that.
Mainly, mainly on Rehoboth, from the canal up to there.
Okay.
But various other places around town, but most of them are in the commercial.
That's okay, thanks, yeah, thanks, okay.
While we're still in the discussion period, can Evan or city manager, can you affirm that you've vetted and have done due diligence on the company? That has made this, this presentation and proposal?
Yes, the company began working with the county, and for whatever reason, the county decided to not pull their funds, but hold off on this project. They've worked in areas that I'm familiar with, have nothing to do with them, nor have I heard of them prior to them coming to Delaware. But they're a responsible company that's worked in Pennsylvania, and I'm familiar with their product. Other than that, I don't know their work in Delaware, but I know the town of Lewis has signed on with them as well.
Lewis is on board, and what?
A comment was made, I just thought it warranted it being asked specifically ways to us.
Yeah, they just recently, in the last six or eight months, finished up a, a project in the Brandywine Valley, connecting like northern Delaware into.
Kennet Square, I think.
Into Kennet Square.
And that's what I'm familiar with.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one last thing, when we put out the bid, can we actually, will we actually own, or can we specify that we own all the designs, so that we can kind of manage this ourselves, or even maybe print signs going forward, using, will we, I, I, I mean, is that already a given? Or is that something we can make sure of, so that if there is a need for, as the mayor said, new signs for X, Y, and Z, we at least own everything, and all we're doing is paying for the printing of the sign, because we own the designs?
Yep, I can absolutely ask him, I imagine if, you know, we're paying for the design, that it is essentially our design that we own.
And that should be specified in whatever contract we have with.
Yeah, but I'll.
Thanks, Evan, pardon me?
It's not an automatic, so it's a good point.
I just want to make sure, yeah.
If there's nothing else, we have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to modify the 2020 fiscal year budget expenditures of up to 278,660 relating to Phase One, Phase Two of the wayfinding signage program developed by Merge Design. Anything further? If not, all in favor?
I.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain, I'm, I feel like the signage is very much needed, but I'm concerned about the timing and the phasing, and it's not clear to me that this vote allows for, for that, since it's a transfer in this fiscal year budget only, and I wasn't involved with this year's budget anyway, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay, and if there's nothing further, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
We did that because you just walked.